It is ten o'clock and it's time for the council meeting session. Mr. Pacheco is here. We have two members present and we need more for four.
Burnson, Chik, Fewer, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Ridley, Thomas, Wernich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, is there, uh, this is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the ninth day of May, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel thirty-five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Padilla moves, Mr. Pacheco second. There's no objections, unanimous vote. The next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item?
Before beginning the irregular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number three, Building and Safety, has requested that be continued for one week to May sixteenth.
Item number three to be continued until five sixteen, is there any objections to that? Seeing none.
Continue to item four a week.
Continue, item four a week, is there any objections to continuing item four a week? Seeing none, that will be the order. Next item?
Item number seventeen, the Housing Department has requested that that item be continued for thirty days to June ninth.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item?
Item number twenty-two may also be continued to June ninth per the Housing Department.
Item what, which item?
Twenty-two.
Uh, if there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Items eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-five, the Housing Department has notified the council that those matters may be received and filed in as much as the reap violations have been corrected.
Eighteen, twenty-five?
And twenty-one.
And twenty-one. There's no objections, unanimous vote.
And item number thirty-three, request from council member Fewer to continue that to May seventeenth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
And item number forty-two, Building and Safety, has requested that be continued to June thirteenth.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item?
Uh, next item, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings, items one and two are, both have ordinances. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Well, let's see if there's anybody who wants to be heard on those. Uh, item one and two, anybody in the audience wants to be heard? We have, don't have any cards. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, and we'll, we'll hold those on the desk until we get twelve. We have twelve? Okay, any discussion on one or two? If not, we need a motion, Ms. Glanter moves. Prepare the roll on one and two. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Items for which public hearings have been held, items five through ten.
Are any specials by council members? Any specials by council members five through ten? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item? Fourth with on seven. Next item?
Items for which public hearings have not been held, eleven through forty-one.
Could we have some quiet, please, over here on the left and on the right? Eleven through forty?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. Any specials? Uh, first of all, is there anybody who wants to be heard on any of those items? We don't have any cards. Anybody want to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Thirty-nine, did you say, Mr. Padilla?
Uh, forty special, Mr. President.
Forty?
Yes.
Thirty-five is called special?
Thirty-one, Mr. President.
Thirty-one is called special. Any others? Okay, we have eleven through, Mr.?
Thank you. Could we send item thirty-two to the Community Economic Development Committee? Three of the resolutions have to do with Cal Works, Workers Investment Act funds, and I'd like to be able to say-
Is there any objection to sending thirty-two to the committee? Seeing none, that will be the order. We have eleven through sixteen, nineteen and twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holden, what do you want now?
I would just say hello to you. Besides that, I want to say, let's continue item thirty for one, for one week. Those amendments were not included, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-four, then we have twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty-four, thirty-six through thirty-eight, and forty-one. Prepare the roll on those. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. The late Mr. Holden wants thirty to be continued for one week?
Right, there are amendments.
Okay, all right. Next item?
On the supplemental agenda, items forty-three through forty-six are public hearing items.
Anybody want to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any specials by council members? If not, prepare the roll on forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Fourth with on thirty-seven, Mr. President?
Fourth with on thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Next item?
Items for which public hearings have not been held is item forty-seven.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on forty-seven?
Uh, Mr. President?
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on forty-seven? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Holden?
It should really go to committee.
Uh, what is it, a transportation item?
Uh, yes. We'll get it out real fast.
Fourth with on thirty-six. Uh, Mr. Holden has asked at forty-seven, go to committee?
IGR.
Is there any, any objections? There's a hearing on the bill tomorrow?
In Washington.
Well, Mr. Holden usually knows what the bill, what's going to happen.
Well, actually, it, it, if it's here tomorrow-
Okay, it's called special.
We make a difference what we do here.
It's called special. Turn him off. Next item?
Uh, next item, Mr. President, item number thirty-one, call special by council member Chick.
Mrs. Chick, you call thirty-one special?
Yes, Mr. President, I wanted to rise in support of our committee's recommendation and in support of the Governor's Traffic Congestion Relief Plan. We are fortunate in the city of Los Angeles, the San Fernando Valley, and the entire city, that a great deal of the surplus money in Sacramento's budget is now being allocated for very needed local transportation projects. And I'm very pleased that there's been a team formed amongst council member Misakowski, council member Fewer, myself, and convening also Supervisor Zev Yaroslavsky, Assembly Member Kuhl, and Speaker Bob Hertzberg, and Congressman Sherman, all to focus on some of the projects that are to be funded in the Governor's plan in the San Fernando Valley. And then finally, we are working with Speaker Bob Hertzberg to get additional funds allocated, both for the 101 freeway corridor congestion and money to fix the worst intersections, the most unsafe intersections, that have been, excuse me, highlighted for us in Public Safety and Transportation Committee. So our supporting the Governor's transportation plan is one more step closer to our getting the funds for all of these needed transit projects. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. President, I need Mr. Deaton a second on this item, on item thirty-one. And members of the council, I'm taking advantage to share something with you that I think you all need to hear, including Ms. Chick, including Mr. Fewer, Mr. Wax. Last Thursday, at the SCAG Regional Council meeting, and the SCAG again is a body that represents the city of Los Angeles as well as all municipal cities, you need to know that Mr. Burnson and I lost the battle. In fact, we were like the only two voting members at the regional council that wanted to support this legislation. I share that with you because cities like Claremont, cities in the, like Compton and so forth, they were taking the position that they don't want this money to go through MTA. They were taking the position that the Governor's plan basically favors the city of Los Angeles. Now, the regional council took that position of opposition to the Governor's Congestion Relief Plan. I'm sharing it because we have fifteen votes on that council, but the only two members present were Mr. Burnson and myself. And what's frustrating to me is every time we deal with these kinds of issues, it's like anybody but Los Angeles. And the reason I think we negotiated the fifteen votes as members of SCAG is because each and every one of us supposedly represents 250,000 people. Now, the reason I wanted Mr. Deaton present is because now when RCLA is doing its job, it's basically going to be opposing the position of the regional planning body who has something to do with transit funds in Washington. Is that correct? SCAG's recommendations and so forth?
They are the regional, uh, body that administers those funds, the regional dollars, regional planning dollars.
Now, I just wanted to kind of take advantage because, you know, I feel real frustrated when we're taking these votes of support of legislation or against legislation, when we're fighting so hard for infrastructure funds for our community. But what you need to know is I was outweighed by a community like Claremont. And I just wanted to kind of bring that to everybody's attention because this vote today is in direct opposition of the vote the SCAG Regional Council took in regards to this legislation. And I needed Mr. Deaton to be aware of that, but I needed the rest of us to be aware of that so that we could take some action. But again, Mr. Burnson, who serves as his vice president, and I were the ones who were fighting on behalf of the city of LA, but in that body, we have one vote, and so does a smaller community, and they're saying they want the monies to go to their communities and stop this nonsense from their perspective of all the money going to Los Angeles. And I just wanted to kind of take advantage and point that out to everybody.
Okay. We have item number thirty-one. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item number thirty-five, call special by council member Ridley Thomas.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This item is one that I think we can all support. It does occasion the question asked to the status of the CAO and CLA's report on this matter, and I think it was going to be heard in GE as well. And it would be helpful, Mr. President, if we could get a quick word from the CAO or the CLA with respect to whether or not we are moving forward with the committee report on the new schools construction and the coordination that's supposed to be in place.
All right, Mr. Fugioke, is he here? Item number thirty, number thirty-five?
On the coordination on the new school construction, both the CAO and the CLA, I think you're working with the Government Efficiency Committee to address that. This is an assembly bill that's looking at it, you know, overarching way for the state. Now we are at the point of trying to figure out whether we are on time with what we should be doing locally. And Ms. Chick, I think this is a matter that you are going to try to hear in committee, this new school construction piece. So this is a reminder that we probably should make sure that the local initiative dovetails with the state action that is pending.
What, what question did you want from Mr. Fugioke?
Just a status report on this matter. Mr. President, you may recall you appointed a, a working group on it, and maybe the CAO and the CLA should find their way to government efficiency and give an update so that we can make sure we're on point.
And that's our intent, to take it back to, to GE, the GE committee.
Okay.
We're preparing a report right now, so.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Maybe Mr. Karsh can come up on this one because, uh, I know that the State League of Cities had asked us to support this legislation, but when I was dealing with the CLA's office, there were some question marks, and that's why we're asking for the proper amendments. Members of the council, my understanding is that this particular legislation might not have the kind of teeth that we're looking for in asking that the school district deal with our community plans, deal with our zoning, when their place- with our community plans, deal with our zoning, when their placing of schools, and I'd like a further presentation as to what it means. Now, the reality is this legislation's moving, and I think that our ad hoc committee still hasn't got there, and we might wanna take advantage of the legislation if we could get it amended, uh, to include. And members of the council, we wanna put this in an atmosphere where we as a community of 2 million people or more distinguishes us from the rest of the cities. And our school district by far is distinguished by, from the rest of the school districts because of its population. But the lack of schools has become a major problem for the quality of life of all our residents, and the education of our children is secondary in many, many communities simply because there is no schools. And so our community plans are trying to take that into account, but the school district isn't working with us. So we could have some kind of presentation what the legislation does and what the proposed amendment is asking it to do.
AB twenty-one forty-seven has already passed the first committee in the legislature, which was Local Government Committee. It did not go to Education Committee, which was the strategy of the league. It is now before the Assembly Appropriations Committee, and the hearing is tomorrow. It would be appropriate if the council agrees with the amendments that we are proposing to take the position today, and we can hopefully work out some amendments that actually will result in cooperation and participation by the school district with the city. We already provide for school siting in our general plan. The bill, as it's now written, doesn't do anything for Los Angeles. Our analyst, Joanne Gaudioso, has worked with the school district and with the League of Cities to come up with some amendments to the bill which would hopefully preserve everybody's feelings, but also increase the participation so that we could get information from the school district. With that, I'll turn it over to Joanne and...
Yes, the bill, the bill AB twenty-one forty-seven really consists of two parts. The first part deals with the general plan. At the present time, the general plan, land use element, asset, all the land element, land use elements include a statement pertaining to the siting of education. Education is used as a generic term. What the bill does is make the language a little more specific in saying that the general plan, land use element, will accommodate the need for new public schools. The amendment that we're proposing goes a little bit further and says, yes, we're quite willing to do that. However, we need input from the school district. We need information about where future schools will be located. So that is our first amendment that we are suggesting to the author. The second amendment is a bit more technical. It deals with compliance with local land use ordinances, specifically zoning ordinances. At the present time, and the bill continues this, the school district, by a vote of two-thirds of its board, can opt out of compliance with local zoning ordinances. We think this practice could continue, however, when the board exercises this option, we are suggesting language, that the board make a finding based on substantial evidence in the public record to support the reason that it would not comply with our local land use ordinance. And that is the extent of our amendments.
And members, and again, I ask for us to support what's before us today, if the district is willing to, I mean, if the legislation can be amended to include those two things.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I had wanted to follow up here publicly with what I have asked the past several weeks of the CLA's office and CAO, and that is, where are we in having this report prepared and brought into committee? Because I've been aware that it's been quite some time since Mr. Ridley Thomas introduced the motion, and I believe there was also another motion from Mr. Hernandez that was coming in. So, Mr. Deaton or Mr. Fujioka, could you just give me a, a sense of when this is, you know, what, what is the delay? What are we waiting for? And when can we expect a report to be ready to present to committee? Because what I'm concerned about is not only this legislation, but the fact that we know that LAUSD is proceeding in shaping out their plans on school facilities, and the whole point of the motion was, we wanna create more teamwork and communication.
True. A principal factor in our ability to finish this report is the cooperation of the school district. We met with Mr. Miller, I think about a month ago, and he mentioned at that time he was reorganizing or restructuring, um, this, this part of LAUSD that handles construction of new schools, and that he would, once that was accomplished, he'd get back to Mr. Deaton and myself for a follow-up meeting. We have yet to meet with Mr. Miller. We need to meet with him again before we can finalize our report. We can, Ron just mentioned that within thirty days, we can push this issue now, given the importance, but we need to separate this piece of legislation from what we're trying to accomplish and reach agreement with, um, the unified school district.
Yeah, I'm prepared to support the, you know, our position as recommended, but it sounds as though we maybe need to up the ante with the school district and Mr. Miller in terms of wanting the dialogue, and I don't know if the city clerk from the committee has written a letter, council offices, the introducer of the motion, and the chair of the committee can also write letters and, you know, what's going on here. Thank you.
One thing I do wanna make clear is that during our meeting with Mr. Miller, he expressed a strong willingness to cooperate with the city.
He and, I believe, Board Member Valery Fields were in council saying that to us, so...
Well, then the proof is in the pudding.
Yep.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I think each of us and most representatives of local government has been asked the question, why is the school district in putting a school here in a certain area circumventing our general plan, or whatever we've established in order to make guidelines? And here's, this proposal, Mr. Thomas and others can correct it if they amend the proposed legislation, which simply states that as we develop our general plan or whatever our zoning ordinance is gonna be, that the school district notify us in advance so we can accommodate them. I see nothing wrong with that. That's not saying let's not have schools. All we're really saying is that we're gonna have planned development and growth in certain areas, and that being the case, you perhaps wanna consider putting a school there, and amendments are most appropriate, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask for an aye vote, as this matter was sent out of my committee unanimously. I was the only one present in voting.
You can't get anybody else to attend with you, huh, Nate? Okay, we have item thirty-five, is it? Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next, Michael? And item number, the next one is thirty-nine? Okay, who called thirty-nine special? Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President, members. Item thirty-nine, it's a motion I introduced last week as a result of the impact on consumers, the impact on subscribers in the dispute between Time Warner Cable and ABC. And I wanted to mention a couple of things because, yes, those two entities have reached a tentative resolution, a temporary resolution. First of all, I want to let everybody know that I am in no way asking the council to pick sides in this debate. You have Time Warner on one side, you have ABC on the other side, and I'm not asking the city of Los Angeles to pick a side between those two corporations. What I am saying is let the city of Los Angeles exert its jurisdiction, its direct authority to protect consumers, to protect the subscribers that were impacted unfairly by the result of the dispute between Time Warner and ABC. What I want to do, what the next step should be, is to look into possible franchise violations. As many of you know, when cable companies reach a franchise agreement with the city of Los Angeles, part of that agreement is a willingness, an agreement to abide by certain customer service standards. And in those customer service standards, there's a requirement for certain notice when certain content, when certain programming is gonna be changed. There's reason to believe that there was a possible violation of that agreement, and if so, we need to find that out, we need to confirm that, and hold the companies responsible and accountable. Another concern, today, the situation was between Time Warner and ABC. Tomorrow, it could be somebody else. So it's not about just these two corporations specifically, but about making sure this does not happen again. And that could be my final reason for why this is so important. As we've all heard over the last year, in two years, the cable companies are evolving. The same companies that provide cable television today will soon be providing possibly telephone service to compete with local carriers. They will be providing and are providing today high-speed internet access. As technology changes, as new features and services are offered, we need to make sure that the impact on consumers as a result of this dispute is not a sign of things to come when it comes to the battle of the corporations, mergers to no end, and bigger and bigger companies. We need to stand up for the subscribers, we need to stand up for the city residents, our constituents, to make sure that they are heard, that their interest is protected in all of this. So I ask for your support of this motion, and will also advise you that if approved, this motion will be on the committee agenda next Wednesday when we hear the AOL-Time Warner cable transfer.
Uh, Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I rise to support Mr. Padilla's motion and intent. I'll look forward to being there in committee next Wednesday to hear more about this, but I couldn't agree more that the bottom line is what we, what we witnessed and experienced I as a viewer and a cable subscriber, along with thousands of other people, is that these corporate decisions are being made way up here without the normal private sector business approach, and what should be governance, governments also, is about serving the public, serving the customer, protecting the customer, and giving the best service. And I think we have a limited ability to weigh in on a variety of discussions with this cable and telecommunications industries, and we need to take advantage of every opportunity that is relevant and appropriate, and bringing it into committee is going to be one of those abilities. I hope that some of the public that was so adversely affected will join us in committee and let their voices be heard at that time also. Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Okay, we have item number thirty-nine. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. The next item?
Item number forty, Mr. Holden called it special, but he advised that that can be continued for a week?
Uh, until next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow.
Somebody said it was gonna be heard tomorrow?
Mr. President, until a week from tomorrow.
Huh?
We'll have it in my committee next Tues, next Tuesday, and it's just going through the first committee, looks okay.
But if there's gonna be hearing tomorrow, they won't have the knowledge of the city council of Los Angeles?
We've taken a position on this eleven years ago. I want a subpoena, the author of the bill, to come in and to speak to the issues, to why he wants and thinks is important. We've already acted on it, Mr. President. Mr. Thomas, I shared that information with Mr. Thomas, and he's concurring. I didn't explain it to you, Nate.
He did explain it? Okay, there's a, any objection to continue forty for one week? May seventeenth. No objection, that will be the order. Next item?
Item number forty-seven, call special?
Mr. Holden, you call forty-seven special?
Uh, yes, let Mrs., Ms. Sikowski go first, and I think it's proper that that be the case, and she's the author of the measure, Mr. President, and then I'll respond.
You're such a gentleman, Nate.
Always, Mr. President.
I'd like to thank our proper city councilman, Mr. Holden. This is a motion that's, there's a bill that's been introduced in Sacramento essentially that would require the city of Los Angeles to double its paramedic forces. And while that may be a lofty goal, it would require more than $22 million to double our paramedic force. So what we are suggesting is that if Sacramento wants to mandate that, that would be acceptable in the bill if the bill requires and contains the appropriation to do it. If not, we should oppose the bill. I, we think we have the fire department here who's been tracking it and looking at it. We have the legislative analyst, and it is, it is a very, very heavy burden were to be passed, and I think we need to express ourselves very strongly on it, that we cannot manage this $22 million hit without the state coming up with the money. Mr. Deaton, did you wanna add anything?
I believe the hearing is tomorrow.
Yes.
In appropriations, Mr. Holden. And the situation is, is that, um, not unlike some bills just recently, Sacramento is looking at mandating this to cities, so if, if the bill has the $22 million as an appropriation in the bill and not a promise of the money, then that would be one thing. There's also just technical difficulties or procedural difficulties of being able to hire this many paramedics, and we think that this is a, a basic home rule issue, as basic as it gets. So we recommend approval.
Mr. Holden?
I've seen you recommend some things that dealt with home rule, and that was not an issue. Home rule should not be an issue in this, in this case. Safety, consideration for the sick. Paramedic program is one that we need, and we need to expand it, Mr. Deaton and LA County and the city of Los Angeles. But having said that, we recognize that we have a budget shortfall, and if the state is gonna mandate that we double our paramedic forces, then the state should be required to put up the money. I mean, that's what they've always done. And if you're saying that the bill should include the, the monies that would be required in order to double our paramedic forces, then how'd you come to realize how much they were gonna be? You said $20 million. How'd you know it's $20 million?
We estimated the, given the bill and talking to the fire department, the, the cost of that is $22 million.
$22 million.
And what, the difference here is that, actually, the motion says if you, if you wanna pass this bill, include as a part of it an appropriation for the $22 million in the bill, not a, where the city has to go and fight it in the mandates process for the next ten years to get the money.
Okay, then that should, that really should be your strongest argument for why you should oppose the bill. They're gonna mandate it, and they should pay, period.
Right.
For that reason, Mr. President, my consideration to refer this to committee, it may not be necessary. I wanna ask, however, is there an SB ninety disclaimer in the bill? Yes or no, or do you know?
It's in the bill as, and it is a disclaimer.
Well, that's impossible. So on that basis, you can alone, on that, wait, Mr. Deaton, on that basis alone, the bill should die because there is gonna be a fiscal impact. You cannot say it's not gonna be a fiscal impact, and you can put it...
No, they've included the SB ninety in it.
That's what it says, SB ninety disclaimer, says there's no, not gonna be any cost imposed.
They do, but it's up to a million dollars only, and this is gonna be...
How successful are we in getting that?
Zilch.
That's right.
It's a hunting license.
Why don't you and I just talk about it afterwards, and then we'll vote for it, and I'll tell you what to say when you get there.
Okay, we'll, we'll vote for forty-seven, and then we'll, I think that that's a good idea.
Excuse me, for the record, the fire department has revised the amount of money that it would require, and it would be $28 million.
Oh, well, we'll get that out, we'll get that additional six million out of Nate's budget. Ms. Galanter? Ms. Galanter, did you wanna be heard on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, from the agenda, it appears that this bill would direct only the city of Los Angeles how to deploy its paramedics. All other cities are free to have complete discretion and do it any way they choose. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
They're particularly fond of us, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think that if we're gonna insist on amendments, we should insist that whatever the formula is they wanna apply should apply to all cities, not just to us.
Well, the formula that's used there is a population density and the number of emergency calls received.
So it's one of those things where they don't tell you it's only to us?
That's correct. Mm-hmm. It possibly could apply to Orange County, too, according to one committee analysis.
Lots of rabbits in Silver Beach.
Is it because of the popularity of the council members that they provide, provide for these kind of bills?
It's a complex formula, but I'm sure that's an element.
Okay, what is the motion?
To approve the motion.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Mr. President, you have special one on the desk. The city attorney will explain the need to make the findings. It's a motion presented by the press, council president.
Okay, Ms. Kowengard?
Mr. Chair, what, Mr. President, what I'd like to do is if we could hold this on the desk and do our public comment and go into closed session, Mr. Han has, is waiting for information. We'll be down here in approximately ten minutes. I can, I can make the findings now if the council would like me to do so.
Yeah, please do, because I think he has just arrived.
Oh, actually, Mr. Han is here. Uh, go ahead, any case. Yesterday, May eighth, Mr. Bill Lon Lee, who is the director of the Civil Rights Division of the U.S. Department of Justice, met with the city attorney and other city officials regarding the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice being authorized to file a police misconduct suit against the city. The council, we are asking to discuss this and brief the council on what's happening, and the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there is an immediate need to act. If the council wishes to go into closed session on this, they would also... If the council wishes to go into closed session on this, they would also need to take a vote pursuant to government code 54956.9B.
Okay. Let's vote to suspend the rules. Do you want to talk before we suspend the rules, Joe?
Yeah, I.
Do you need to do the findings first?
Yeah, I clearly support the findings, yeah.
Prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now, the matter is before us, and Mr. Wax?
Yes, Mr. President, I think it's imperative that we have this meeting in public. I can't think of anything more important, any more important public policy than how we clean up the mess in our police department. And I think that we have to deal with that forthrightly. I think that this is public policy. Public lives are affected, and the public pocketbook is affected. And the people have a right to know not only what's involved, but what we're in fact are going to do to resolve the issue. And I think that going into executive session, going into closed session, will only fuel suspicion, it will breed distrust, and it will keep us from achieving our primary goal of restoring confidence in the people of this city, in its police department and in its government. I can think of no more important business to be discussed publicly and openly than this. And I would strongly urge us to keep this out in the open, let people know exactly what we're going to do, let people know exactly what's involved, and once and for all, bring the people of this city together into reforming our law enforcement system. I just think it is, it would be the worst mistake possible to go into private session and to try to keep this from the public eye.
Mr. Deaton?
Mr. President, I would recommend that you stay in public and direct the city attorney that at some point, if it does become difficult to do so, that you consider going to executive session, but I would agree that this should be in public.
All right, Mrs. Chick?
No.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, that would be my position as well. I think that a public discussion of the meeting yesterday would be helpful to everyone because I was at that meeting, and I don't believe that there was really anything that was said that shouldn't be said in public and couldn't be said in public. And I think that when you don't make the report from a meeting like that in public, people then believe that there's some nefarious reason for your not doing it. And there was nothing nefarious about the meeting at all. It was quite cooperative, quite cordial, and I think that should be reported, and we would do well to do all of the reporting about it in public.
Mr. Padilla, we haven't heard any motions to go into executive session, so, Mrs. Pacheco, Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I wanted to know during this report if there was going to be a representative from the Department of Justice, because I was concerned about how they went about their methods, since we know that many of the entities involved in Rampart are from the Department of Justice, and how they've been monitoring the city for a couple of years, they didn't detect anything or inform us of anything earlier or waited till after the board of inquiry report. So was there going to be anyone here from the Department of Justice? I just wanted to know if they're going to be included.
I don't believe so.
I don't know.
I don't believe there's anybody from Justice.
There's nobody from the Department of Justice here. I think Mr. Lee went back to Washington.
So we can only ascertain the information through secondhand, asking our city what they reported to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Sikowski, did you want to be heard?
I was just going to say, point of order, that I think both with what the city attorney will present, as well as other people who were at the meeting who can respond to some of the questions. Clearly, the Department of Justice will be back, will be talking with us some more, and any questions we have that are more formal of a nature, we can ask them. But I think a lot of what and how they came to be where they were yesterday can be imparted. So I think we should begin with Mr. Han giving us a report.
Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, how is it that some council members attended and others didn't? Was it invitational? I certainly didn't receive an invitation, and I would have liked to have been there. As I understood it, Ms. Sikowski, representing the Public Safety Committee, which seems very appropriate, was there. But then I saw one of our councilpeople as spokesperson on the, for his reaction on the news, and now I hear that Ms. Goldberg was there. I don't know who else was there. But was this a selective invitation, or what happened here? Because it seems to me that it was important enough, as Mr. Pacheco said, if it's going to be filtered, or if some councilpeople could be there, they usurp the rights of others to get the same information firsthand.
Councilwoman, the, two things. One is that the process was one in which the information was coming down late Friday afternoon, and so there was a little bit of clamor to get things put together. But the intent was that the president had appointed a Ramparts litigation group, which included two council members, Mr. Fuer as Budget and Finance, and Cindy Sikowski from Public Safety. And because of the nature of the litigation, the president chose to attend the meeting as well. And my understanding is that Councilwoman Goldberg called the city attorney and asked to join. So that's the nature of the, it was the Ramparts Steering Committee Group, the litigation, that those two people who were initially going, and because of the nature of the litigation and what it, by Monday, we had a better idea of what the nature of the meeting was about, the president chose to attend as well. And that's how it came about.
Okay, let's have the city attorney come forward and use a report on this meeting yesterday, and Mr. Deaton, if you want to stick around and make any additional comments.
James Hawn, city attorney, Mr. President, members of the council. On Friday, on May fifth, the Department of Justice contacted the city attorney's office late in the afternoon, requested a meeting for yesterday. The purpose of the meeting was described to us at that time as an opportunity for justice to provide a status report on where they were on their pattern of practice investigation and to work cooperatively with the city on future steps in their investigation. The Department of Justice, in fact, suggested the invitation list. They asked for representatives from the mayor's office, the police department, the police commission, and the city attorney's office to be in attendance. When it became apparent to us by press reports that the matter to be discussed in the meeting would involve litigation, I asked for representatives of the city council to be present in the meeting. And so if anyone's to be blamed, Councilmember Walters, it was me. I suggested that at a minimum, the president of the city council, the chair of public safety, and the chair of finance committee be present. Councilmember Goldberg asked as chair of personnel committee, when she heard about the meeting, to attend. Again, it was put together very quickly. Because under this current charter and under the new charter, the city council will be making client decisions and settlement decisions with regard to consent decrees that appeared to me to necessitate the appearance of the council members at that meeting. We met in what I would characterize as a productive, two-and-a-half-hour meeting with the Justice Department. I believe that the city and the Department of Justice share the same goals, to reform serious problems that exist within LAPD, and we all agreed to work cooperatively toward that goal. In the meeting, the Justice Department reminded us that they have been conducting a pattern and practice investigation alleging misconduct in LAPD. This has gone on for several years. As a result of their investigation, the Department of Justice Acting Assistant Attorney General Bill Lanley indicated that they have determined that the LAPD is engaging in a pattern of practice of excessive force, false arrests, unreasonable searches and seizures that are all in violation of the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. And they've authorized filing a civil suit in the United States District Court pursuant to the statute 42 USC, section 14141, to obtain declarative and adjunctive relief to eliminate the pattern of practice of misconduct. The statute was passed by Congress in 1994. The, up to that time, the Department of Justice did not have the authority to bring this type of lawsuit. In 1996, in October, was the first request by the Department of Justice for document production from the police department and the city in regards to that. We have had intermittent requests for document production in 1996, in 1998, in 1999, and most recently, in the spring of this year. The Department of Justice went on to indicate to us that they will defer filing this lawsuit if the city officials are interested in negotiating a voluntary settlement in the form of a consent decree that would then be filed simultaneously with the civil complaint. The city officials present indicated that they were interested in meeting again soon. Justice Department also indicated that this civil lawsuit and this consent decree is totally independent of any criminal investigations being done by the United States Department of Justice involving any criminal acts by any Los Angeles police officers. The Department of Justice relied on a number of documents that we have in fact produced, including our own policy statements, officer-involved shooting reports, other reports that we provided, information on civil lawsuits, the board of inquiry report that was provided, other documents that were presented to them over the years. They have met with various people in Los Angeles Police Department, other members of the police commission, and the inspector general on various matters over the years. They specifically mentioned the lack of an early warning system, a comprehensive computerized risk management, employee tracking system that they had, that the federal government had helped secure funds for us to implement. The fact that we still do not have that system in place was of great concern to the Justice Department. They have found that the pattern of practice of police misconduct includes unconstitutional use of force. They have found improper officer-involved shootings. They have found improper seizures of persons. There are, again, violations of search and seizure in the Fourth Amendment. They have, in their communication to us, they have indicated that they believe that these actions occur on a regular basis. At the same time, however, they were emphatic to point out that they believe that the majority of Los Angeles police officers are ethical and hardworking and responsible individuals who have not violated constitutional rights of the persons that they serve and protect. They believe there's been serious deficiencies in LAPD in terms of supervision, in terms of training, in terms of management, in terms of employee discipline. They believe that these deficiencies foster and perpetuate officer misconduct. They also contend that the LAPD has failed to supervise officers by failing to identify and respond to patterns of at-risk officer behavior. They've also felt that the department does not adequately respond to citizen complaints. And they also pointed out that they do not believe that the police commission and the inspector general have been given adequate resources needed to conduct meaningful oversight of LAPD. They point out that, going back to the Christopher Commission, that similar bodies, similar findings have been made in the past, that the five-years-later report also pointed out that some of the Christopher Commission reforms still had not been implemented. And most recently, of course, as I mentioned earlier, the March first, 2000, public report of the LAPD Board of Inquiry made similar filings. The Department of Justice believes, after looking at all these reports that, and these findings, that clearly, even though it's been identified before, that misconduct continues. And they acknowledge, however, that there are a lot of ongoing efforts going on now by LAPD, by the police commission, to address officer misconduct, to address especially officer misconduct as it relates to the Rampart Division. They believe that the board of inquiry report provides a lot of very solid recommendations for reform. The Justice Department is encouraged by the commitment of the police commission and the inspector general to evaluate the issues. Even with all that, though, they have felt that the only way for them to respond at this point, to ensure that these good intentions in fact become the reforms that are implemented in the department, that they believe that federal action is required in the basis of a patterned practice lawsuit. The meeting was, you know, I think, a good opportunity for us to understand where the Department of Justice is coming from. We also discussed a number of things that the Department of Justice would be interested in having the department do to remedy this situation. And so we discussed the kinds of things that they would be seeking in a consent decree, or the kinds of things that they really are seeking us to do to make sure that pattern of practice ceases. They've requested a meeting next week. We're going to try to work out that schedule so that we can discuss the prospects of litigation, whether or not the city wants in there into negotiations, leading to a consent decree, or any other resolution of this matter. For all these reasons, my recommendation is that the city council appoint representatives from this body, from the police department, from the mayor's office, and in conjunction with my office, to negotiate with the Department of Justice on a resolution of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Deaton, did you have anything to add at this time? If not, I'm going to ask council colleagues to be recognized.
I think the only thing I'd like to add is that I think in that discussion that the Department of Justice and the city agreed on, for the most part, what needed to be done. And I think that the Department of Justice outlined things that were included in the board of inquiry report, and there was the early warning system. And I think the question on the table really is how, the most credible and structured way to implement what we all agree needs to be done.
Very good. Let us go into council colleagues first. The chair would like to recognize Councilman Hernandez.
I just, I had two questions, and again, most of my awareness of this came about because of the newspaper articles. One of the questions I've been asking all along is, there's been no other area that has had more federal task forces working and operating with LAPD than in the Rampart area. I mean, I've had the mess group, I've had a variety of task forces that were basically dealing with the drug problem, dealing with the gang problem in Rampart and so forth. Was there any indication as that part of their pattern or part of the distinguishing factors that they're bringing to the table is some of their involvement in this process?
No, Councilman, that was not mentioned, that federal entities were involved in these situations. That was not discussed.
And is it going, I mean, has anybody been asking that question? Because I've been asking the question, and I haven't gotten, nobody's given me a response to that question. And I just think it's important because they, if they were seeing something that we should have been made aware of, I wanted to know why we weren't being made aware. And if it's part of their analysis as to this pattern they're describing, because I've clearly known that on several occasions, we've had special task forces working in Rampart, and it definitely included the federal government. And we were basically talking about their successes, and they were working hand-in-hand with the police officers. And I just would think that if they saw a pattern at those levels, we should be made aware of it, and we should be asking those questions as part of our inquiry. The second question I wanted to ask was, did they find any distinguishing factors? Did he talk about any distinguishing factors when they talk about these patterns and lack of oversight between administrations? Clearly, in 96, we had a new administration with Willie Williams coming in, and then in 98, we had a change, in 97, we had a change of administrations. And did they talk about that? Or are they talking about something? Or are they talking about something that started prior to ninety-six and did not really distinguish the leadership roles?
In fact, they expressly indicated that there was no, you know, change or specific direction that would have caused them to feel like there was a change in leadership that led to this problem. In fact, that they did talk about this in the light of a continuum, going back to, you know, nineteen ninety-one and the Rodney King incident, and that they had felt that they had seen this pattern develop over a period of time, and that even with reforms that had been made by subsequent leaders in the police department, the Police Commission, that the problem still was maintained.
Yeah, one thing exactly, I'm very much aware of, at least in the divisions that service my district, and there's no other council district that has more divisions servicing a district, there was constant leadership changes. As we changed the chief, they would change their deputies, and they would change all their personnel, and it just kept on coming down the line. And there was a constant change of leadership, and that's why I was wondering if they had noticed any distinguishing patterns there.
No.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. Hahn, this Lee fellow, who's the assistant to the Justice Department on civil rights, is he the guy who was not confirmed by the Senate?
That's correct. He was appointed as acting assistant general.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And he's the guy who came up with the consent decree that you were supporting, and that he was supporting, and that certain members of the City Council, now, who sit like righteous analysts, voted no, not to accept? Is this the same guy who presented that to us?
Mr. Lee was formerly counsel of the NLACP.
He had an agreement with you on this, is that correct?
Yes.
You both agreed on that?
Yes, that was a different lawsuit.
I know, but you both agreed on it?
Yeah.
And some members of the council did not, and that's why it didn't happen. Now, you're trying to negotiate with this very same person an agreement to avoid another lawsuit. Question is, how are they going to act this time? And the letter he wrote to you, I don't have a copy of that letter. Do you have it? Can it be made public?
A letter was, a letter was given to us. It's a decision of this body whether or not the letter should be made public.
Well, some members, I can't vote unless I know what I'm voting on. Mr. Fuer and a few other people have this letter, and if I'm going to talk about what we're going to settle, then I'm not going to vote for a settlement unless I know what we're talking about settling on, number one. Okay? And number two is that, you know, I have some concern, even though the argument has been highlighted, the claim that's been highlighted about the arrests, excessive force, et cetera. And then Mr. Lee is saying that we better do this, so he's going to file a lawsuit. And this is the first big city in the nation that he's going to take this action against. And I want to know what the heck is this thinking when it comes to New York City? If you're going to clean it up, clean it up all. I have some concerns about that. I think the best chief is Parks. Management, we had problems before, we know that, under the chief before that, chief before that. We know what went on around here, nobody had enough guts to stand up and say it. And this guy comes in, he starts cleaning house. You know, when you start doing good, they criticize you for it. And Lee knows that. If it's his report, if it's the chief's report, basically that it's being used in order to gather the information that the Justice Department, that they're using, what are they talking about? I want to talk to that Lee guy, be very honest with you. Sure, if we got problems, let's deal with them. But I don't want him to say, to establish any more of a stigma on L.A. than we have by saying, this is the worst, it's bad, if it's bad, let's clean it up. But we know what we read about what's happening in New York. He doesn't have the guts to go to New York and take them on. I got some problems about that also. Wherever it is, where people's rights are being violated.
Okay, Mr. Holden. Yeah, you went over. These are allegations, aren't they, Mr. Hahn?
And that's all they are, yes.
All right, Mr. Fuer.
I think Mr. Deaton wanted to say something first.
Well, I'd like to clarify. One, there was a letter, that letter has been given to the city attorney. The city attorney has the, all the copies of that letter. And Mr. Holden, there is no settlement, there is nothing before you other than a willingness of the city and the Department of Justice to sit down next week and further discuss this issue. I understand.
Maybe we should point out that this was just a report we felt all the council members should have after the meeting yesterday. So that's why we're, that's why we're having this meeting, Mr. Holden. Okay, Mr. Holden, you're out of order. Mr. Fuer, will you proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say a few things. You know, Mr. Deaton led with his version of the report, similarly to what Mr. Hahn said earlier, with the notion that we do share common goals here. And some of the best evidence of how much our goals are in common is that the key things that justice is looking for mirror, if not emerge, from the Board of Inquiry report, the teams to contract and our approach there, and the Inspector General's work plan with respect to the Police Commission's undertaking regarding the Board of Inquiry report. And that's a good thing, because we are focused on the same issues here. And from justice's standpoint, I think there are at least two basic principles that they want to see further. You know, one is, they agree with us. They want to legitimize the reform effort here in Los Angeles to the fullest extent possible. And obviously, they want to see the goals be realized, that these reforms actually take hold. And so much of the discussion yesterday, and I would recommend that the discussion from our council standpoint, continue to be focused on how we can work together with justice to see that vision and those basic principles and the specific goals that they delineated be realized. That's what's on the table for us, how best to accomplish that, working with the Justice Department. Because basically, I think, from the standpoint of those of us here, there are at least three things that we want to assure take place. The first of which is, we want the reforms actually to be effectuated and to matter over the long term. And that long-term point leads to the second goal, which is, we do want to assure, and I'm going to use that word that they use, legitimize, we want to legitimize the ongoing civilian oversight over the police department in a way that enables us, over the course of the future, not to have to deal in an ad hoc way with crises as they emerge, but instead to assure that we have civilian oversight with teeth that really matters here in the city. And the third goal, which is related to the other two, it seems to me, is we have to be doing everything we can to restore public trust. And they're all deeply tied together, those goals, and they relate to what justice is after. I'm going to close now, just want to simply say, in those broad strokes, that we ought to be perceiving justice, and justice ought to be perceiving the city of Los Angeles' leadership, to be essentially on the same page. Getting to that bottom line, and what I think remains for all of us to do, is to work in nuts-and-bolts way with the Justice Department, to figure out how best to define the role that justice can play with us, to assure that all the values and all the goals I've referred to get furthered and not be undermined by the way this process moves forward. And that was at the heart of the discussion yesterday, and I would suggest, colleagues, that we continue to focus on those issues as we move ahead.
Mrs. Chik.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the positive spin, and I think it's a relevant one, that Mr. Fuer just presented. But in reading the newspaper accounts and listening to our city attorney, one thing rings through very strongly to me, and that's that, however we share goals, et cetera, that the Department of Justice has just given a very clear message to us, that it is not comfortable with the laissez-faire kind of approach that we've been taking. Laissez-faire in the sense, let the commission do their work, and let the police department, and look at that wonderful Board of Inquiry report, and that we can just sit back and let them take a look at themselves, and then we'll go forward and correct everything that's wrong. They're saying, if I understood Mr. Hahn correctly, good intentions are not good enough, and that they want to see action, not just good intentions. We've been having good intentions on reform, police reform in this city, on and off for decades. So of course we want to work with the Department of Justice. We'd have to be out of our minds to want to end up in a lawsuit. They're now coming in and saying, we don't have full confidence in letting you fix this yourselves. Why haven't you fixed it before? I have a couple of questions also. First of all, I wanted to know, and I'm not sure there's someone here who can answer that. During the three, four years prior, when the Department of Justice has been looking at things, what has been their involvement and communication with the Board of Police Commissioners? Also, I'd like to hear more about the possible details of a consent decree, and what are we being asked to do in addition to the tracking system, and I think there was one other thing mentioned? And then also, in terms of liability and/or cost, fiscal impact, what possible effects does entering into a consent decree have on our liability on these cases that are being brought against us, and involving direct costs to meet the requirements of the consent decree?
Councilmembers, your first question, I know there were meetings, I don't have the details unfortunately with me, there were meetings with the Police Commission, Police Commission staff, and the Inspector General, they were contacted by members of the Department of Justice. Again, intermittently, there have been requests for reduction of documents, and those documents have been produced, but it's kind of, there's been large gaps in time between those contacts. The issue of liability, if the city enters into a consent decree, if that's a decision that the city decides to do, that will not absolve us of liability for damages and individual acts. But it may provide some insulation against, one of the other things that is out there is some people are trying to put together class-action lawsuits against the city, where in addition to damages, they would like to set the rules of running the police department. Obviously, if you have the Department of Justice involved and there's a consent decree, that provides insulation against, you know, every Tom, Dick, and Harry coming along saying, you know, they want to come up with a new set of rules for the police department. In fact, justice has experience in cities where there have been individual lawsuits at the same time they brought one of these lawsuits, is that those claims for injunctive relief in the individuals' lawsuits were dropped after the consent decree was entered. I think that there's a, there possibly could be a benefit to the city entering in the consent decree with the Department of Justice in future incidents alleging misconduct or alleging excessive force, and that we would be able to cite a consent decree, you know, signed by the Department of Justice, as a possible defense to a new allegation that there would be a pattern of practice of violation of civil rights to any new lawsuits that might come after such a consent decree was entered. But as to incidents that have already occurred prior to the entry of the consent decree, it would offer us no such protection.
Mr. Deaton?
Well, I was just going to comment to that, actually. What this is, is a report back on their initial discussions with us and our willingness to sit down with them, obviously, next week. The details of any proposed resolution, whether that ends up being a consent decree or some other form of resolution of this problem, the details of that have not been really even begun to be discussed. And we have just agreed to sit down next week and start the process of going over those and deciding what might or might not be in some resolution. I keep using the resolution and not, and not the other language, because that's the message we've sent to them.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I do agree with Councilmember Chik, that I think what's going on here is basically, the Department of Justice has no confidence that we're going to carry out any reform that we may deem appropriate. Because since nineteen, what, ninety-two, we've had the Christopher Commission recommendations, and they have not been implemented to its fullness. So that's what this is about, but what I think we have to make very, very clear today is that the Department of Justice hasn't told us anything new. It's not like they're coming to the table and saying, let me give you some new revelations about what's going on. If you look at the things that were pointed out, I was telling Councilmember Miskowski that I don't think you need to spend years investigating the department to conclude, especially based on the information we received from Rafael Perez, that there's been excessive force, false arrest, and search and seizure violations. But for me, what I find real interesting is that if this has been going on for years, what knowledge do they have about Perez and his friends and the criminal conduct they were conducting and did not reveal to us or did not share with us? And what they're talking about doesn't seem to go anywhere different than the Board of Inquiry report and the Christopher Commission. So for me, it really comes down to a lack of faith. And that is not, something that I don't really have a problem with, because obviously, I'm one of the newer council members, I've only been here a couple of months, nine months, so it's probably much more difficult, if you've been here since nineteen ninety-two, to have someone like a big brother, like the Department of Justice, come around and say, since you can't take care of it, we're going to force you to take care of it. But that's what I get from this, is that they're basically saying, the last eight years, you've been trying to do something, you just haven't gotten there, so we're going to assist. So from my viewpoint, if they have the resources and they want to help us with getting things back on track, I welcome it from that viewpoint, because we, I have no problems getting assistance or asking for help to do the right thing. But I don't want people to walk away from this and act as if the Department of Justice came to us and brought us something new. I don't see anything new here. I welcome their help. I understand that no one likes to be told or forced to do something that they should be doing already. But in this case, if you ask an average citizen or the guy at the barber shop, he's going to say, or she's going to say, listen, after eight years, I can see where they're coming in to help you out. So I welcome their resources, and I hope that they do critically look at their task force and see what role they played in further exacerbating the issues and the problems that we're facing with LAPD, because as Councilmember Hernandez pointed out, there have been numerous task forces at the federal level working with those police officers. So they don't come with clean hands, but we welcome their help anyway.
Mr. Deaton, did you?
I'd just like to comment that Mr. Pacheco obviously didn't have to be at the mean. I think that was a good summary of exactly what the situation is, is that they used the information that we have put together in large part, the early warning system, and then, and their desire is to aid us with credibility, structure, and commitment.
Mr. Hahn, would you be sure to release that letter to each member of the council?
Yes, we'll do that now.
Okay. Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm delighted that this discussion is taking place in open session. I frankly believe that open confession is good for the soul. Toward that end, I think we have to acknowledge that we have failed. I think we have failed to push forward an agenda of reform in this city that the citizens who voted in June of nineteen ninety-two said in clear terms was a mandate. And I think we have to begin with acknowledgement of the very same. I feel very strongly that the emphasis over the last six and a half years, as it relates to public safety, has been in large measure on the expansion of the police department rather than the reform of the police department. And I think that the Justice Department is making it abundantly clear that much of the discussion, much of the policymaking, much of the agenda around reform essentially evaporated and continues to do so. When they ask the question about the role of the Inspector General, and all of the consternation that has surrounded that office, it suggests in clear terms that reform was being tested at best. When they ask the question about community-based policing, again, a fundamental feature of the issue of police reform, there is not as much as we ought to be able to report going on in that connection. And so I think when we talk about what is going on now, there is a sense in which the mayor of this city has to take full responsibility for setting the priorities as it relates to public safety, which have been focused almost exclusively on building a bigger police department. Department, not necessarily a better Police Department with respect to reform. And I think the city council of this city has to acknowledge that in more than one instance, let us say in too many instances, we have gone along with it and to that extent, we are faced what we are today. It seems to me that this discussion is aided by our beginning with a note of candor and indeed, open confession.
Mr. Wax?
I think Ms. Chick really put it right when she said, and I think in essence, if the Justice Department was happy with what we were doing and cleaning our house, they wouldn't have come here in the first place threatening a lawsuit. That said, let's get down to the specifics. What are the essential ingredients that the Justice Department would like in a consent decree? What are they asking for?
We don't know exactly, a lot of those things were discussed, we asked them to give us an idea of the kinds of things they would be seeking. They talked about, obviously, as we've mentioned several times, the, the implementation of an early warning system and officer tracking system. They would like to see changes in the, you know, training of supervisors, that they were dissatisfied with people being put into positions of supervision without adequate training. They discussed revisions in the discipline system, they, we discussed the, you know, how other consent decrees have worked in other jurisdictions that have included the use of an outside monitor that was jointly selected by the, by the jurisdiction and, and the Justice Department. There were a number of things that are on the table. They reiterated though, over and over again, that they wanted to work with us to come up with those solutions because they think they're best homegrown.
I appreciate that, that they want to work with us, but they're here basically to tell us that we haven't done the job and that they're going to make sure that the job finally gets done. And I'm glad that they're here. And I want to make sure that everything that is quote negotiated or discussed as an essential ingredient to a consent decree be done again in an open process whereby the people of the city who are affected by the policing practices have input as to, as to what those ingredients should be. We need to have this finally and once and for all done in a public manner so that there is input, not only from those among us who are here, who make decisions, but those who are out in the communities who are affected by decisions. That process should be imperative as we go through point by point just what it is we're going to do to clean house. And I think it is really critical. I think it's also important, I'm sorry today that the mayor and the chief aren't here because I think that they've got to be present, I want, all of us should be at the table, all of us should be held accountable, and all of us are going to have to participate and we're going to have to have an open process that welcomes, once and for all, all of the people who are affected by those decisions. That was part of the point when Ms. Walters criticized the quote independent commission of the Police Commission, that you can't have a commission, no matter how good the people are, simply excluding people whose very life experiences are needed to understand the nature of the problem and what it takes to correct it. So let us hopefully, Mr. Ridley Thomas, that today's open hearing be a commitment that the rest of the hearings will be in the, there's nothing to be afraid of.
Thank you, Mr. Wax. Ms. Goldberg?
Well, I think that was a great timing because I have primarily the same position. I welcome DOJ's involvement because I think, as many have already said, I'm not only echoing, not, not saying for the first time, there, there were wonderful ideas in the Christopher Commission Report, the hardest ones to do, the most important in terms of tracking that would have caught this pattern in practice, were not implemented. And I think what I got from the meeting with the Department of Justice was, because it was asked directly of them, what exactly do you bring to the table? And they answered three things. The first thing they said is, is that we can make your reform efforts more credible because we are an external agency and we can put that stamp, outside stamp, that outside eye on it that says, this is going to get done. The second thing they said is, is that you need to end up, because there are lots of people studying this, 116 on our own, there are several other task forces, there might be one from the Attorney General of the state, that you end up with one unified set of recommendations in, and from their point of view, in a consent decree. And then they said, from, and I'm extrapolating from what I heard from them, is that the most important thing is, is that they want to ensure that they get implemented this time. And I think that's their whole goal personally, in wanting a consent decree, is is that then you have an audit and a perhaps a monitor and you make sure that these things actually get done and you have a force external to the city that if you decide that other things rise and capture your attention and you wander off, not out of any malice even, but you just, as we sometimes are wont to do in large cities, other things capture our imagination and attention, they will have someone focused on making sure we implement what we say we're going to implement. As I personally look at it, I think had we done this with the Christopher Commission Report, we wouldn't be where we are today. Had we had some external monitoring device that required that we actually implement those, those recommendations, I think we would not be where we are today. So I think that they, their message really was, they want to work with us, that's no joke. They do believe the solutions that come from the city and they looked at New Jersey, they talked about Pittsburgh, that come from the cities themselves are the best ones. They encouraged us to involve the bargaining units so there would be buy-in, but I felt from what I got out of the meeting that their most important goal was to make sure there was a method of accountability that said this time, when you have a good set of proposals, that they actually get carried out and implemented, not just in the short term or the easy ones or the ones that can be passed with a simple measure, but the hard ones, the difficult ones, the ones that have long-term and lasting effects.
Thank you. Ms. Miskowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I think a lot of what I wanted to say is what Ms. Goldberg said, and that is a couple of things. One, there have been some questions around here, is what were the specifics? Members of the council, those of us on the city side who were in that meeting, as we heard them itemize the specifics, we all felt that if we had the Board of Inquiry Report in front of us, had we turned the page and read the table of contents, those were the specifics. Everything that was in the Board of Inquiry Report, probably taken further, but that was the outline of the specifics. The other thing, as they indicated what they were doing in, in the room, was they brought the three things. Ultimately, and overall, they brought legitimacy. They brought credibility to any reform that we might be doing ourselves, they brought structure, which is something that they're familiar with and have utilized in other places, and they brought our seeking commitment. Three things, credibility, structure and commitment. Overall, legitimizing that that we are doing and certainty that we will do it. And then they said, we've all said what they said they said, this is their statement that they released after our meeting. "We acknowledge the important efforts of the Police Commission and the LAPD to uncover the misconduct that occurred in the Rampart area and to identify management practices that allowed the misconduct to take place. We seek to enhance and strengthen these efforts and to turn promises for reforms into actions for reforms." That's where they are, that's where we are, and that's why I think the recommendation by the city attorney, that we continue to meet with them next week and help create this model for resolution, that with them overseeing, participating with us, creates that certainty that we in the council, we in the city's history, have failed to provide over the past number of years since Christopher, both before and after. So I think we generally are all saying the same thing, it's a question of how we get there, what that model, what that process will be, but they are there guaranteeing certainty and legitimacy.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, there have been some quiet discussion regarding a letter. Mr. Hahn, I read about the letter in the newspaper, so it's got to be some public comment somewhere about that letter, which being withheld from the members of the council. And I certainly like to
Mr. Deaton?
Have a copy of the letter. Number one. And number two, Mr. President, I just want to reiterate that in the defense of the management of the Police Department, they are working aggressively under this chief, under the Police Commission, to clean up the problems. And I think we all know that, that just in, within the past year and a half or so, they have released from duty more than 100 police officers for misconduct across the line. I don't think you can find any chief anywhere who's been so aggressive about remedying a situation as, as has been Chief Parks. Mr. Lee's suggestions here is really, in my view, is not fair to that manager, that chief. And when I talked about sitting down and being one of the person to talk with him, I want to raise that issue with him, why? And why at this time that he's doing that? That he had an opportunity to work with someone who cares about solving the problem as much as he does and we do, and working aggressively to do that. And so, Mr. President, members, those are my comments. I'm not totally happy with the approach that Mr. Lee has taken in terms of trying to get us to solve our problem, yet we have problems. And I just want him to look in his eyes when he tells me.
Ms. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly can agree with most of the things that have been said here and want to underscore for our benefit that this is not an issue about personalities. It's an issue about a pattern and practice of destructive behavior that we've got to be about correcting. And correction means focused attention, focused attention over time, without letting up until the problems have been corrected. And we had all those wonderful recommendations from the Christopher Commission, we focused on them for a short period of time, and in, sometimes they slip away, some of the recommendations slipped away or got modified. I know of one particular issue that was in negotiations and the league, Police League would not agree to it. So I'm pleased that according to Ms. Goldberg, they're suggesting that the unions be involved in the negotiations so they can have a buy-in and not engage in the selective picketing or selective brownouts or whatever, blue flu, I think they call it, relying on their political muscle to get what they want from us. So I, I can't, it's unfortunate that we have not, it's more than unfortunate, that we have not adhered to the recommendations that have been made, particularly in light of the pattern and practice of the Police Department over the last 50 years that I'm aware of. The good news is that I believe we will come to the table and agree on this, agree to a consent decree that will save us from the litigation that might be required. And I suggest that a good place to start, council members, you know, I brought the motion here to have a more diverse committee looking into this, that the independent investigator has appointed, Inspector General for the Police Department has appointed. I found out during the budget hearings, not only has the motion not been brought to the council floor, but I found out during budget committee that the Inspector General has increased the size of that committee from the initial 26 to well over 100. And the representation or lack of representation, the committee has gotten, has not gotten more diverse. He has appointed 80% I believe of the people are attorneys and 70% or 80% are Anglo.
Mrs.
And this is not acceptable here, and that is an area that we need to take over and say it's got to change.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
And I thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, on that point, it seems to me, in light of what is pending, the case could be made and perhaps should be made, that the current investigation or evaluation of the Board of Inquiry Report be suspended until we get a handle on what it is we were doing, what we are supposed to be doing, and I would so move, Mr. President. The other point I want to make is that it seems to me that it's very important to pick up on the point that was made earlier. That this is not a question of personalities, it is a question of policy. And we are the policymakers. We are the policymakers. And we have to bear responsibility for what has happened or has not happened. And I underscore the point that I made earlier, that it seems to me that the, the focus and the priorities as they have been articulated over the past six and a half years in this city has been not on reform. And as Ms. Goldberg, Ms. Miskowski articulate what the Justice Department suggests it can deliver, three things they say they can deliver. But I wish to know, and I think the people of the city of Los Angeles would like to know, particularly those who have been systematically, historically, you might say traditionally, been the victims of police misconduct and this pattern of civil rights violation that the Justice Department alleges, I wonder if they can count on our delivering reform? That's the question of the hour. And we have yet to live up to that. I think we have to own that, and the finger pointing can be far flung, but at the end of the day, I think the chief executive of this city bears principal responsibility and those of us who boast of being the governing body have to take our fair share of that responsibility as well.
Chick?
Yes, going back to Councilmember Miskowski's comment that in terms of details of the consent decree and what we'll have to do, I think you said something about the Board of Inquiry Report, has it all laid out there in that Department of Justice statement? I don't know if you were referring to the letter?
No. They issued a straight statement right after the meeting yesterday. We have a copy of it.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I would, I would say the following, that the Board of Inquiry frames the problems from one person's or one entity's point of view, that's the chief of police or the Department LAPD. It frames the problems and then it also goes ahead and talks about some solutions like replacing civilians, a whole variety of things that are serious policy issues that I have some concerns over. But what the Department of Justice hasn't worked with this on yet, it seems to me, is not just listing what the problems are, but what needs to be done to solve the problems and what needs to be done to absolutely avoid repetition of the problems, which is why, for, I already know that I support going to the public with new charter amendments that will both change the appointing authority of the Police Commission, because it's the Police Commission appointed by the mayor that has been mandated to provide oversight for the department and to create policy for it. There's been a suggestion made in an op-ed piece to look at the Ethics Commission and how that's composed, appointed by mayor, president of the council, controller, city attorney, and I forget the fifth. It's just one, one possibility. And also, it's very clear that in my attempts and others on the last go-around to strengthen the Inspector General position, we haven't gone far enough. That to me is exceedingly clear, and that there's going to need to be changes to bolster up the true independence and to perhaps look at someplace else that hires and fires the Inspector General than the Police Commission. But in terms of checking up on the implementation, I again repeat that the status quo and what we have now has not worked and I have no reason to have confidence that it will in its exact replicated form, and it's why I welcome the Department of Justice, I am waiting for them to tell us not just what the problem I am waiting for them to tell us not just what the problems are, but what we need to do to correct them and see that they never happened again. And that's where we've fallen down in the last seven years.
Ms. Zakowski?
I agree then. I think what Ms. Chick has indicated is where we need to get, and that's what the issue of the next couple of sessions and how we get there. I did want to remark that Mr. Ridley-Thomas suggesting that we suspend the independent panel, I think would be contrary to our best interest because the group from Department of Justice who was here talked about reaffirming what was going on there, and if anything, they wanted it to be done more quickly rather than, than suspended. I think that they would see a suspension as, as just more chaos or confusion and that they really want to see. And in fact, what those of us on one side of the table indicated particularly, I'm sorry that both the chief of police and the commission president are not here today because the commission president was the one who was the most engaged with the Department of Justice yesterday. And he indicated that they are moving very quickly on this and are inherent on absorbing themselves an awful lot of reform from, from within. And the Department of Justice did everything they did to confirm that, to move that, say all we want is the structure and the certainty that will occur. And I agree that with Ms. Chick, a lot of it may involve, most likely will involve different formulation about both how the commission is created and how the Inspector General is selected and chosen. And that is something that I think we see as needed and will be a charter reform. But I think we can't stop now. We can look at what Ms. Walters has indicated in terms of who's on that, how it is enhanced, and that is still coming to Public Safety Committee imminently. But we must not just suspend everything at this point because I think the, and the other thing I want to say is that the commission president indicated with the Board of Inquiry that, that, that we did not see the Board of Inquiry as the end. We saw the Board of Inquiry as the beginning, and that's what the commission president said, that we, the commission, did not accept the Board of Inquiry as the, as the itemization of the problems and the solutions. We saw it as just the beginning, and the independent panel is going far further than that. So if the Department of Justice has just used that as its beginning structure, we are already looking to implement models way beyond the solutions that were in the Board of Inquiry to better systemically change from just what, what the Board of Inquiry focused on, which was one division.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, Ms. Zakowski, I must differ. It makes, if part of what is primarily important to us is not simply public safety, but public trust, that there's a sense of confidence that the people of this city have in law enforcement officials, sworn personnel, then it seems to me an investigation of the department has to represent the best of what this city indeed reflects. It is inexcusable, in my view, for the investigative body to proceed in the fashion that it has begun. It has been called to the attention of Mr. Eglish, Mr. Chalif, and the host of those who are principally involved, that this is not a representative body and the very constitution of the body essentially denigrates the objective that is being sought, namely a higher level of public trust and confidence. It seems to me that if we are serious about reform, it is not just simply fixing a magnifying glass on the chief, the command staff, the rank and file, but it has to be a consciousness that says that the Police Commission, the Inspector General himself, those entities have to function in a particular way. And fundamental to the issue of the Fourteenth Amendment, fundamental to the issue of civil rights is the question of racial justice or injustice. And I submit today, for this body being constituted as it is, when it's been called to the attention of those who are responsible for appointing members to go unchecked is part and parcel of the very problem that they claim to want to critique. So I stand again to say that it ought to be suspended based on composition, and in addition to that, I would argue that until it is clear what the scope of the negotiations will entail and the direction that will be set pursuant to agreement based on those negotiations, that group claiming to be independent, but certainly not balanced, ought to be suspended. Now, I don't know how we engage in such a blatant contradiction. We have to do something that gives a message that says we are serious and going forward. And I don't wish to impugn anybody's motives. I'm not interested in castigating the character of the persons involved. I simply want us to be credible about the business of reform. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, I got a copy of the letter and read about 90 percent of it and digested very well. This letter, in my view, is a boilerplate accusation that could be used against almost any police department in the country. And all you do is you substitute the name, City of L.A., New York, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Chicago. And that's what, that's what, and that's what it says to me. It doesn't suggest that a thorough investigation of the party department, because there's no supportive numbers, there's no data except the data that they gathered from the police department. And the police department's, and the newspaper says here, that the Board of Inquiries report is what they use, LAPD's own Board of Inquiries, that they use for this report, which means that the department is looking at the problem. They have identified the problems and they have a report made available, and the Justice Department, Mr. Lee takes a copy of the report and put it in this letter and send it to us as if it's something we don't already know about. And that's the way I see it right now. So until, I mean, he's got a, we have to justify something, we have to come up with a positive statement for corrective action, but he's got to say where he got his data from. And how many people have been working on it. We need to know that before you start name-calling. And what I see here, Mr. President, is, is some problems that we know we have, we're addressing those problems, that's why we have a Board of Inquiry report, looking at troubled police officers, who's giving the department a bad name, that we know about. But this, this letter here, in my view, is a smear tactic, period.
Galanter?
I move the previous question.
Okay, I think everybody's, any objections to previous question? Seeing none in the matter as before. Actually, this was just a report. Now, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, your motion, I think, should go to the committee.
I have no difficulty with that.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Hahn, thank you, Mr. Deaton. This has been completed.
Mr. President?
We'll keep, we'll keep everybody posted, but if there's a meeting next week, we will also, but I would, I would suggest that possibly Mr. Hahn, Mr. Chalif, and Mr. Deaton represent us in any negotiations that, and the mayor's office, if there's any negotiation to be conducted with the.
Mr. President, I might make one more further suggestion, whether it's in order or not in order. I would like to suggest that perhaps the interest of this council in this matter, especially specifics of the, the Justice Department's suggestions for reform in LAPD, if the, if the council as a body would like, we would certainly be happy to convey your invitation to Mr. Lee and the Justice Department to present, you know, their feelings about this directly to the council in an open session.
Mr. Wax?
Yeah, the only question, and I don't know what you meant by it, so I wanted to clarify. I thought I heard you say that you wanted Mr. Hahn, Mr. Deaton, Mr. Chalif, and the mayor to, to represent us in negotiations, and I think all of us should be involved in negotiations. I mean, I, no, seriously, I don't believe that this is something, with all due respect to Mr. Deaton, you know, that, I don't think this is something you have, you leave to someone else to do for you. This is something we should be doing collectively in some kind of a process.
There may not be, there might not be an aid in negotiation, Mr. Hahn, so let's.
If I, if I might respond, the idea would be before decisions were made to come back, but I, just yesterday, there were some dozen to 15 people from the city in the room. And I don't, it does not have to be me, but if you do not have a focused discussion with, they had three people and they really had one person that was doing.
Perhaps let me go retrace, whoever it is, it should be in a public process so that those who want to participate and see what is going on and weigh in can be there. What I really, I guess, object to is any small group doing it privately. That's the essence of what I would object to, whoever those people would be.
Any final thing would have to be approved by the council. Okay, all right, the next item.
This is a time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be on here and public comment? We have no cards. Seeing none, the public hearing is, is closed. The next item.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, we're going to go into executive session, so all those people in the audience not involved with the executive session, please leave the council chamber. All those not involved with the executive session, please leave the council chamber. Maria?
motions for posting and referral.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
You have excuses on the desk. Councilmember fear requests to be excused Friday, August 18th, and September 5th. Personal business and city business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused June 27th, 28th, and 30th. City business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
Councilmember Ridley-Thomas requests to be excused May 24th to leave at 10:45. City business, I need a motion.
All right, Mr. Tchikol moves, unanimous vote. Next item.
And Councilmember Wax requests to be excused May 23rd, 30th, June 6th, and 14th. Personal business, I need a motion for the 23rd.
All right, Mr. Savarnich moves, unanimous vote.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, Sergeant, would you clear the room?
Yes, sir.
Let's be forced.
Item number 48 is settlement in the amount of $427,000 in the case of Southwest Engineering versus the City of Los Angeles.
All right, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
Okay, we have adjourned motions. Would everyone please stand?
Yeah.
Members of the council, I'd ask, we wrote, we adjourn in memory of Rosalind Orlaf, who passed away, longtime L.A. resident who devoted much of her life in helping other women establish their own businesses. She founded Nama Custom Designs where she and her associates helped women develop businesses in the apparel design business. She leaves a daughter and two sons, including Rick Orlaf, who covers City Hall for the Times. All members on that.
Yes, thank, I'm, I'm glad and it's very appropriate that our council president adjourns in Rick Orlaf's mother's memory. I just wanted to add that I had met her on several occasions. She was a very lively, fun, friendly person, and also I've been very impressed over the years at the kind of relationship that Rick has had with his mother and how much he was at her side through her long struggle with cancer.
Ms. Galanter?
I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Alona Katz, who was a member of the Santa Monica College Board of Trustees, Community College District for a long time, and very active in civic affairs there. That's a college, even though it's in Santa Monica, that serves a lot of residents of Los Angeles. She's survived by her husband, former councilmember Herb Katz, and her daughter Dana.
Mr. Holden?
Did I join in quothring the Rick Orlaf's mother?
All, all members are seconding Mr. Deaton.
Ms. Chick just took the words out of a mouth. She's perfect when she said, and as President I'm speaking, when she said that there's a close relationship between Rick and his mother and, and their many friends. She's a wonderful person, I met her on many occasions, and I understand that he misses her and we support him.
Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Dr. Alonso Krim, who at one point was superintendent in Compton. He had been superintendent in Berkeley, I believe, Compton, Carmel. He went to Atlanta where he was the first African-American superintendent for that city, and then on to Boston. I understand that he was also the first African-American superintendent in Boston of schools. He was a man who was truly dedicated to responding to the needs of children, soft-spoken, but just very dedicated and committed to the work that was at hand. He strongly believed in research-based education, did a lot of research on his own, participated in numerous other studies, and was just all-around a very fine person.
Ms. Goldberg?
I'd like to join you in presenting that. I had an opportunity to work with him while I was a teacher at both Centennial and Dominguez High School, and he, he was really an educational leader.
Yes.
And we were very fortunate to have him as the, in that leadership and felt his loss when he moved on to other districts tremendously. And he had a great, deep, and abiding respect for the classroom teacher, which he was more than willing to demonstrate in, in a variety of ways, not just give lip service to. And all of us who were teaching at the time will, will certainly mourn his loss.
Call the roll. Hi, the council is adjourned.